Weaver County Comis-
Sorry.
There we go.
Okay. Welcome everyone to Weaver County Commission Work Session. Today is, believe it or not, Monday, November third. Round start of the year. I'm Commissioner Sherboll, so I'm here with Commissioner Jim Harvey and Commissioner Gage Frower. Item one on our agenda is a discussion under action through approval of the minutes for the Commission Work Sessions held on October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five.
Madam Chair, after a thorough review, I move that we approve his put down there.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries. Okay. Item two, discussion regarding county AI policy.
Okay.
Quinn Foward, Brian Barron, and we also have Chris Crockett with us. Jessica.
I'll turn it over to Quinn and Chatty.
Okay. So I'm gonna. Chat GPT has helped us a little bit with this AI policy, so I'm gonna let her explain it.
Okay, good. Her?
Well, yeah. Hey, Chatty, I know you've helped us for a while doing this AI policy, and I've got the commissioners here, and I would like you to explain to them some of the issues, the things that we looked at as far as being too restrictive or privacy and what some of our focus was. Can you go ahead and do that for me? She does.
Absolutely, and happy to help out.
Oh.
Commissioners, what we focused on with this AI policy was really striking a balance. We wanted to make sure that we're protecting everyone's privacy and being smart about how we handle sensitive information. But we also didn't want to lock ourselves into a corner by being overly restricted on which tools we can or can't use. AI is everywhere in software now, so our focus was more on a common sense approach to privacy, making sure we safeguarding our citizens' data without stifling innovation. Let me know if you'd like any more details.
Can you touch on the CGIS, PII, and HIPAA?
Absolutely. So just to quickly highlight those, we're really focusing on making sure we protect certain types of sensitive data. For example, CGIS is all about criminal justice information and making sure we're handling law enforcement data appropriately. HIPAA is all about protecting health information, and PII is any personally identifiable information. So things like names, addresses, social security numbers. Basically, we just want to ensure that none of that sensitive data is getting posted or shared in AI tools in a way that could compromise privacy. So it's really about setting those boundaries to keep everyone safe and compliant.
Thank you. So. That is actually, we had taken our first policy from Davis County, and they had specified, here's like two tools you can use. And in the time they had come out with their policy and the time they sent it to us, it was out of date. And so we tried to adjust that and say, well, here's the ten tools you can use, and within two weeks, it was out of date. And so it's integrated into everything you're using, whether it's your phone, Google, Apple, Siri. All of the software that's out there, they're implementing some type of AI. And so we kind of dialed it back to say, we're not going to tell you what you can and can't use, but we are going to tell you the kind of data, which we already do in email, right? That's why we have encryption. So that you can't email social security numbers, HIPAA data, or CGIS data. And we saw from UAC that, you know, somebody volunteered the information that they had uploaded fifty resumes to ChatGPT and had ChatGPT tell them the most qualified people, and in doing so, they had just sent a whole lot of private information up to the cloud and and early on in ChatGPT. So if you, if you do have an account and you log in, you can see your history of the questions you've asked and the data that's there and the things that you've uploaded and the data that's come back. And early in ChatGPT, they had a glitch where I logged in and all of a sudden I've got all of Jim's history, everything he's ever asked it. And, and you've got mine, like it wasn't a wonder one, it just got blended. And so people freaked out that I've been telling this thing, I've been uploading my my blood work from the hospital, and so it's a super useful tool, right? If you upload that, but you take away the private information, it can come back and give you a pretty comprehensive health screening of where you're at. So there's just tons of tools, but we focused on CGIS because the sheriff's office has a lot of information that, and they do have a program that they do upload CGIS information into, but it's actually CGIS certified. Health department's got HIPAA, and so we've kind of tried to limit them, our, our what's the Microsoft just left me? It was the replacement for Cortona.
Co-Pilot?
Co-Pilot. It's HIPAA. We, we have a HIPAA certification for that, and so we've asked them, any other tools unless their health software has some type of certification, just don't put that kind of information up, and then just plain PII. We're asking people to not upload a bunch of resumes. Early on, a few years back, the HR was telling me, you know, well, I just upload these report, you know, a report on somebody and it rewrites it for me, and that's great, but we kind of focused on, well, if somebody's accused of something horrible and it's not true, you don't want to upload that to say rewrite this for me because that's now out there and it could be misconstrued as true. So our policy just focuses on kind of a common sense approach and what you shouldn't, shouldn't upload. And that's where we're at. Anything you guys want to add?
I would just say with social media, it requires disclosure if someone makes a social media post on the counties and on any of the county's platforms and uses AI. Let's see what's.
Substantive? Or substantive, which is a?
Substantively.
Substantively. So basically that means if they use AI a lot, if it's kind of the main content, they have to disclose that. Just something simple that says this post was created using AI, but if they use AI for like a caption or a description, they don't necessarily need to disclose that only if it's used substantively, so.
The last thing I would add is that it also requires humans to be responsible for the end product. AI can help produce something, but it's the employees who are going to be responsible if there's anything that's wrong.
Questions?
Yeah, so I don't know enough about this to ask anything probably relevant, but you said, so private information. So let, you just said, okay, somebody you get your report back on your blood work, you put it into chat, whatever it is, and say, okay, you know, how does this compare as a good or bad, which I'm assuming you could probably do. So what stops me from getting your information and based on this?
They're.
That's, that's, privacy concerns me.
Right, and, and they that my stuff I uploaded is not readily made public. You can't say, do you have Quinn Foward blood work? Like
Okay.
But they did have that glitch early on where you log in and you've got my whole history, my health, my screening, everything, and then they hurried and shut it down.
Oh, so that's no longer part?
And they fixed it, yeah. So, but the point was sometimes which has happened, and we don't want to be uploading that kind of information. So if you're putting that out there, you could upload it and just make sure your identifiable information is stripped off of there, your record number, your name.
Okay.
Case that health report got put somewhere else or your taxes or.
So is that covered under your policy?
Yeah, we're, we're saying no, no personal identifiable.
Okay, alright. That's, that's all I have. I just I get concerned, you know, all of a sudden somebody put in that type of information and next thing you know, it's on Facebook, and, you know, we checked out Quinn's blood work, and boy, he's got real high cholesterol.
Right. Well, and we, you know, our programmers use it because we're converting from Oracle to SQL. And so they can take a, they can take a large program and say look at the Oracle stuff to go to SQL, go ahead and convert that. It's when they would grab a data set with our people's data and throw it out there and say, update the data set for me, and now we've just put PII out there. And so they just have to be aware of, use it for what you can because it's very valuable, but
Yeah.
sets you up for what you're putting up there.
I get it.
Because I think the state has a training that every employee is supposed to take on data privacy, starting, but well, we're all gonna have to take it by the end of the year. I don't know if they have a section in there regarding AI or not. How do you think we would train all of the employees on this? Upload it into their yearly policy reviews or?
Yeah, there, I think there are AI, pretty basic AI trainings even on our know before. And what HR was using, I think there is, and we tried to the people that are affected by CGIS know what CGIS is, people affected by HIPAA know what that is, and then the PII, we actually put the definition in here because we had people come back and say, I'm not sure what that means. But yeah, it'd, it'd be a short training, but definitely.
Hopefully it's already covered under the.
I hope so.
Day training.
I can't remember, I was on that committee for like four years and I, I can't remember whether they were even addressing that or not at that point.
So couple of questions. Does this first one is, is I noticed that when she was talking, it wasn't in a British accent.
I, I bet.
There was like one word, I think, that she used.
She glitched.
What about storage? Is, is this all stored in some kind of cloud? What's our responsibility with regards to storage on any of this?
So any of these tools, yeah, that's all cloud, and so that's why we say
Don't we, are we paying for it?
No. No. You can pay for different services, right? So you can use the free version of ChatGPT or you can pay for it. It just keeps a history of your conversations, but that's it's out in their cloud, and that's why it puts it back on us to not put something out there. So there are, there are packages, like our, our external website has a chat component, people can ask questions, there's an AI component coming into that to start to look at people's questions and better direct them. But we're not putting data out there, so, but we pay for that. Our help desk does the same thing, we pay for that.
Brian, are we classifying all of it as drafts? So it wouldn't mean we subject it as a record or anything like that?
We haven't talked about whether it would be classified as a draft or not in the policy, but that would be my position. We got a grand request asking for that information.
It never comes back as a final product, your work.
No, and it, and people can have their settings to have it just be deleted when they're done with that session. So you would never know whether they kept it or not, like, I'll go back and clean up mine on this random stuff because it does on the pay version, I can, I can have a conversation about some piece of equipment or technology, and then two weeks later, I'll say, remember when we talked about that? And she'll be like, yeah, this is where we were at. And she, and she knows right where we left off.
But you can delete that.
I can delete that if I want, or I can tell it, don't even keep it, let's just start new.
Without naming names, I did upload our briefing, which are public documents, in a certain lawsuit. I asked ChatGPT to be the harshest, most critical judge it could possibly be, and tell me who would win, and we it predicts that we're gonna win in this lawsuit.
If we're harsh and critical.
Yeah. No, you, any deference. Just judge this, and it, it, it did a really thorough comparison of all the briefings. It's pretty incredible what these programs can do. But it's also pretty amazing what they miss as far as citations.
Well, no. Definitely, there's a much bigger margin of error than people realize, and you have to go back and say.
Based on fact.
Like I had asked it on a stock, what do you think about this stock? And it came back, oh, the high and low, there's no, no real catalyst making it go up, and I'm like, really? Because I just read that this big company was gonna purchase them or looking at purchase, well, yeah, that's a catalyst. I guess I overlooked that, and I'm like, is there anything else you overlook? Well, yeah, there's. We should have done this the first time. So, yeah, there's a lot, you kind of learn the checks and balances.
And they learn you.
Yeah.
They learn everything.
Yeah.
Wow, it just seems like you've really created another person.
Yeah. And here's the scary part, because we have, and the reason the policy needs to be there is we, we do have people that are just like well, I'm gonna record all my meetings and transcribe them and give me a summary, and I'm like, well, that depends on what your meeting is. Right? So Jim James basement.
Ritalic.
Ritalic.
For sure.
He's got a little tablet that he's like, it just does all this, and I'm like, where's it put in it? Is it CGIS certified? Is it secure? Well, I'm not putting CGIS data out there. I'm like, so you guys, when you're discussing a defendant, you're not mentioning name included with this, 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 or this, right? You gotta think about that, because I can't patrol what the tools are because they just show up. And I can't turn it off. It's everywhere.
Yeah.
I don't know more questions.
No more questions? You gonna see this on our agenda?
Should.
I don't think it's on tomorrow's. No.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna count the next Tuesday, but.
Thank you, and thank your, uh, pal there, what's her name?
Chatty.
Chatty.
I could introduce you later, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, guys.
He's got her own email. Parasympathy.
Thank you. Alright, we'll change out the room here. There's probably a group of people out there, if you wouldn't mind sending them in.
This one, if any of the members from Senate are here, I'd ask them that, please stay out.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, we might as well go into a closed session right now and entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries for now in a closed session.
That's, I'm not sure what should do.
What is?
What's the next item?
The next item is Nordic Sewer Improvement District Resolution. This one's fast.
Commissioner Flohr, do you, I talked to Scott, he doesn't have anything for the three forty-five meeting.
Who?
Uh, Scott Mendez.
Okay.
Do you want us just to cancel that?
If he doesn't have it.
There's, there's no update.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason to have it, yeah.
We'll send that out, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, we're on item four, discussion regarding Nordic Sewer Improvement District Resolution, Stephanie, so Thomas Shawn Lindgrenson. Stephanie.
Uh, Commissioners. Um, Lauren and I have been working with Nordic um, and the state to make sure that um, the creation of their district addresses all of the needs, well, we didn't create their dis- we didn't recreate their district, we just activated it and appointed board members. So we've been working with Rob and his, and, and the board members for Nordic uh, Valley Sewer Improvement District, um, making sure that uh, they're set up so that they can go ahead and fulfill their governing document with our PID that we've established with the Nordic Valley Project area. Um, so we, they had a couple snacks with the state, and it's just because that, that district had laid dormant for a while. And so in order to get over those snags, what the state recommended is that we redo the resolution that we had originally done this past year. And uh, Lauren's been working on that with Rob and, and his team. Um, so we've got that on your agenda for tomorrow, um, unless you have any questions about it, Lauren's gonna go over the changes to it. And um, if there's any hesitation, we can pull it off, we thought we'd get it put on so they could move forward and start getting their, getting their projects going, so. Yeah. I guess square with the state, okay?
So yeah, so this is really just an amendment to the resolution that created the district, um, it's the improvement district, so the code allows, it's a little bit I guess foggy is the right word for it, um, because this is such an old district. And but there is a way to kind of add a, add a service, and again, this is coming right out of recommendation from the state too, so we're putting pretty good about it. But basically, the resolution will just add water, um, it's going to change the name to be the Nordic Valley Water and Sewer District. And then it also just clarifies that this is a basic special district, so it's an old district and it's gonna fall under those laws. That's it.
Any questions?
No, makes sense to me.
Are you gonna present tomorrow or are you gonna?
I'll, I'll present tomorrow, and, and once again, this is so they can move forward, they've already pulled their PID bonds, they just need to get their projects going.
Okay.
And this allows them to do it, and it gets them in complete compliance with the state, there's this funny little gap where they weren't, they weren't active, so, Rob.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I think it's an old district for old folks, right? Terrific, thank you, wow, I'm getting there, not quite, and, and so as we, uh, as we look to adding water, which we just thought we could do on our own, because the law doesn't, doesn't give, doesn't prescribe
Yeah.
um, anything for a special district, it doesn't prohibit, but it makes me uncomfortable when the law is silent, I think it makes us all uncomfortable. So we had a meeting with Seth Olbison and basically explained, he's the, you know Seth, he's the state auditor for, for local government, and um, we, he suggested just for belt suspenders that we follow the special district code, which is basically to, to have that um, done by resolution. So this would get us culinary water, secondary water, and sewer, um, so we can provide those services. And we, we do have folks that are wanting to annex into the district who want water, um, maybe not sewer yet, but they probably will, so we've been a little uncomfortable in doing that when they're requesting both water and sewer, so this will just help us put that in place and, and kind of pre-run it with the state auditor, they said do it this way, and so I think we're all fairly comfortable with, with that. And having it as a basic district will also help us in terms of future elections and appointments, rather than
Exactly.
improvement district, which again, is just a, you said foggy. I think it's a good word for Halloween, or Day of the Dead, or whatever day it is today, but it is just a, uh, it's a, it's crisper and cleaner and, and puts us back into the section of code that will govern us, so, anyway.
Which was also really important, we were having a hard time getting them in complete compliance with the Lieutenant Governor's office because of this kind of ambiguous status, and they had had this period of dormancy, so this also.
It was actually the transparency office.
Yeah.
Cause they wanted all the old, old reports, financial reports, and asking.
Nobody had it.
Nobody wasn't.
There wasn't, right, because it was never, yeah.
So, but we did get that squared away as well, so that hole was off and.
They, yeah, so they're good to go with this resolution, it's on your agenda tomorrow, so just wanted to have a heads up and have, if you needed, had any questions or didn't want on the agenda, we could take it off, but we wanted to expedite this.
We're good, thank you.
It'll be good to see if this actually works, I, I'm hopeful, I'm sure it will, uh, cause we've had these questions out in West Lieburg about what we do, if we consolidate, um,
Yeah.
districts and have other districts take over, um, sewer responsibilities that the county's been doing, so this, this is a very, uh, it's a useful exercise.
Good point.
Great, okay, thank you, thanks Lauren.
One terrifying point, if I can, I am assuming by adding all of these, I, I mean, the water, the sewer, the culinary water, secondary water, and then sewer we've already had, that you don't intend, the county doesn't intend to pro- provide any of those services to Nordic or any of the other areas that we would annex, is that correct?
That's the statement of the resolution, is that, the county, it's the county saying we're not going.
Yeah.
Thank you, cause I need that
Yep.
in order to, in order to uh, annex other areas in, so that I just gotta know that you're not gonna do it, otherwise I have to wait for forty-five days, and we don't have forty-five days to wait, so, we need to get this all done, okay?
I think you're safe in that, thanks Rob.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be back to see you again another time.
Yeah.
Appreciate your help.
Come back and have more time.
Okay.
Lauren, will you send the others in?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Next item is combined planning commission.
Oh.
Commissions.
Let's see.
I do.
I believe it's favor, no.
What about the snow at the top of Powder Mountain?
Uh, your favorite, you decided as well? Absolutely.
I know, and we do expect to get something. So, no, 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 fine, I was switching topics, I was, I was just talking about making sure that, guess what, the way you, before we get it, Chris was going to be all the guys in the world.
That's okay.
Yeah.
They know it's coming.
Okay, Commissioners, our next item is discussion regarding ordinance to combine the planning commissions, Cortland Erickson, Rick Grover, Sean Wilkinson, Cortland.
Thank you Chair, the, the question I received was to look into what would be needed to combine the planning commissions. And a few years ago, the state legislature created the ability for us to have one unified planning commission, even though we have two planning advisory areas without going through the formal process to dissolve those planning advisory areas, which would normally require a petition and an actual vote at an election to dissolve the planning advisory areas, but the statute now, as of, I think it was three or four years ago, says a county, um, it may only be a county of the second class actually, um, can dissolve the planning commissions and just have a single countywide planning commission that covers all planning advisory areas. So the areas would still exist on paper, but there would be a single planning commission. And this ordinance that I drafted is the way that the statute indicates we can accomplish that. And so it would not just be Ogden Valley Planning Commission is gone, but Western Weaver Planning Commission stays as the existing planning commission. It would be both are dissolved and there is a new planning commission with new appointments and you're absolutely free to, to appoint to that anybody who's on the Western Weaver Planning Commission right now, you could appoint them to new terms on the new planning commission.
The same staggered, uh, terms that they are on, I would assume, and then.
You could do that or you could adjust the terms.
So we will have to reap, we will have to appoint.
Yes, and the, the, the intent is to stagger the terms, yeah, whether you try to stay with, if you choose the same people, if you try to stay with what they are now.
Right.
Or if you bring in someone from the Powder Mountain area or the Snow Basin area, or one of the other unincorporated areas up there. And that's totally up to you, how you do that, it can be some representation from the unincorporated parts of the valley, if you choose.
Any questions?
No, so, I, I guess on this timing, would this going to affect January one then?
That's another thing that I, I left a blank because I wasn't sure when you would like to have it go into effect, you could do it effective as soon as you want, if you chose to.
One side, I mean, like to have it done immediately, the other side said to get rid of some hate emails, it should be January one, but, uh, anyway. Uh, so that's blank then.
Yes, that was for you to choose, yeah.
I, you know. I know, that's a good one. A lot, let me think on that before I open my mouth.
Do they have four more meetings each?
There's two more meetings, November and December.
Oh.
So we could make it effective immediately.
Well, if we did that, we'd have to appoint, if we did that, we would have to appoint before they can convene, right?
Yes. Which maybe, maybe you could do simultaneous.
I mean, if we, if we make it effective immediately, then we have no planning commission members on that new planning commission.
Yeah, that's.
I guess, yeah, if you have projects that Commissioners are already up to speed on, um, I guess it depends on which project you have left. If, if the timing's gonna matter, cause I think you could do them at the same time, where you.
But we could also, we could also set a date certain, like December first, for example, that we had prior note, yeah, I'm looking kind of at our Western Weaver, which at least my thoughts are, most of those people would stay on because that's where majority of our requests are gonna come from.
Sure.
I think that Snow Basin, I don't think does have, has any residents up there.
Right.
That would fit into their criteria, Powder Mountain, I could see one person, this is my, one person probably from Powder Mountain. Um, and then basically everybody else out west, I don't.
Well, regarding the timing, Chris, um, would we have to open, open these up for application? You wouldn't?
I believe you looked at that.
It isn't a requirement, it's the way it's traditionally been done, but the, the way the code reads, you have broad discretion to appoint.
Which could be the same members as the Western Weaver Planning Commission.
I assume, I assume that it will, it will be, but I just wanna make sure that we're following that.
No.
Oh, because if we have to post it, then.
The, the date of December first makes sense in, uh, after the canvas in two weeks from tomorrow. Uh, the statute gives the new city the authority to appoint a planning commission, so they're gonna be doing that anyway.
They've already started the process.
Right, which you really shouldn't be doing, but they are.
They.
Um, but it, uh, officially after the canvas, they are, they have the legal authority to appoint a planning.
Which would, the canvas would be done by mid-November, right?
I believe it's two weeks after the date of the election.
November eighteenth.
So De- December first may not be a bad idea. And then we'd have time to have that commission in place prior to the start of the first, next year, which that's when you're gonna start seeing more applications come in and we're not starting January, kind of behind the scenes, or behind the eight ball.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I'm really ready to relinquish. Okay, yeah.
I know, you're gonna have, you're gonna tear up on this a little bit.
I'm, uh, yeah, huh, I'm okay with December first, you wanna fill that in?
I think so, I.
I guess we'll be part of our adoption of that.
You would still have the jurisdictional authority over that area and, uh, the unincorporated area that New City incorporates, so this new.
Right.
Commission will still have that authority, even though there's two planning advisory areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we know that they have the ability to set up their own planning commission as of.
December first, but they're not gonna, oh, not after the canvas, but they're not gonna be making any decisions.
But they can't.
Just start their code.
But that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And because I think that, in all fairness to our existing Ogden Valley people, I'm sure there's some great people that would love to serve on that new planning commission for Ogden Valley City, and I don't, I wouldn't wanna overburden them, so.
Yeah, okay.
Chair, I, the state code, I don't know why I overlooked this, state code does not require any kind of applications or anything for you to appoint, it just says, enact an ordinance that defines appointing procedures, our ordinance, the way it reads now, does say members shall be nominated by the county commission from a list of applicants. Now, it doesn't say you have to advertise for those applicants, but it does use the words from a list of applicants, that could be, you go to each of the Western Weaver Planning Commissioners and other handpicked people and ask them to fill in an application and then you choose to nominate them and approve them based on that, um, but it does use the word applicants, we could eliminate that from our county code and just say, members shall be nominated by the county commission or appointed by the county commission, um, without using the word applicants, or you could leave it in there.
I'm okay leaving it in there and honestly, if, if this is adopted tomorrow, that's one, two, three, we wouldn't be appointing until December second, right?
It kinda works, doesn't it?
So it, it could be open for, for four weeks if it had to be, I, I think I'd rather leave the code the way it is and county code and let them apply, let, ask them to reapply and.
Yeah, I see no problem, I, I think it makes sense, application, we just tell any of our existing Western Weaver people, we'd like you, we request that you apply, but make your application and we could, and there may be somebody else that applies, but I think in all fairness, apply, I don't think that hurts us.
For sure, and then if we wanna stagger those terms so that they end on the dates that they end now, would we just do that during the appointment?
Yeah, the way I drafted this code, meaning it is initial appointments at the time of the creation of this planning mission may be longer or shorter than four years, but no longer than five years to account to, to account for the need to stagger terms and have them expire on June thirtieth of the different years.
Okay.
So you could decide based on whatever you want, just how to stagger those.
We typically put resolutions in your packet identifying when their terms would expire and you can just.
Okay, alright.
So tomorrow it would be on for first reading and then, I guess, actually the next week is.
Veterans Day, so it would be on for a second reading on the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth.
How long do, oh, does our code say how long applications have to be open?
No, it just says from a list of applicants.
Perfect, then I think we can just do, we can adopt the final on the eighteenth. Mm-hmm.
And then appoint.
And then appoint on the second.
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
And to give you a heads up of a request you are going to be receiving in the future, we've already heard from one group about it, and I don't see any legal mechanism that will allow you to do this, other than through an interlocal, is for our planning commissions and our planning division to maintain jurisdiction of current projects that are already submitted and in the works, even past the incorporation. I don't know how that would work without an interlocal agreement, but you are going to be receiving those requests soon.
Do we have any legal grounds to do that?
I've been able to identify, unless it's through an interlocal agreement.
Okay.
So, we, uh, got the request from Nordic last week.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you, thanks Cortland. Okay. Our next item, uh, look, Stephanie and Ricky should be out there, Rick, we send them in.
Okay.
Our next item Commissioners is discussion regarding ordinance to combine the planning, oh, sorry. See what, see what happens if you don't cross it all, discussion regarding the twenty twenty-five budget changes for the third quarter. Stephanie Ebert and Ricky Hatch should be on their way.
Yeah.
I already announced you, Stephanie, sorry, we're a little behind.
Chris, is there is a legislative change that allowed us to do that to?
I guess it's timing because the legislature, the blue law wouldn't go and put it back until March.
Well, there's a way to expedite.
Yeah.
If you could expedite that bill, just thinking out loud here, will that be possible, right?
It could be something that you wanna do just internally, as far as like it's a JARI projects, just agree with the New City officials to just finish those projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do that now.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, yeah, anything that was submitted prior to the.
Okay, Stephanie, you're, I've already announced you.
Okay, so I've handed you a, a list of our budget changes for the third quarter for twenty twenty-five. Uh, there are relatively few changes on this list, the first section is related to just help department grants, additional grant revenues and expenditures that they will be receiving. So those are usually pretty self-explanatory, uh, the second section, uh, there was a budget change, uh, for four million dollars that we are transferring out of our tourism fund, uh, to help fund the conference center, that is still a little bit of a fluid number. Uh, we'll be watching that to see where that ends up, uh, Marty and his team are working on some of those final numbers for us. So we could see additional, uh, changes there. And the next one down, conference center revenues and expenditures, we're making more money selling more stuff, so we've got to increase our expenses for that. Building inspection services, we've also received additional revenues there, uh, that will help with our contract payments that we are contracting services for, for additional building inspection permits. We had a Eagle Scout project that was funded by donations, uh, out at our culture parks and rec department and then the final one on the list is a transfer station, some additional expenses related to the, uh, ramp that was funded out in the transfer station.
Out of that, out of the transfer station, out of that enterprise fund.
Correct. So if there's, uh, I'll be presenting these tomorrow, it requires a public hearing, so that was posted and that will be on the commission agenda tomorrow. If you have any questions there.
Any questions on those?
That's good for me.
Okay, and then on the back of the page, uh, we also have, uh, one additional request that we had to add, uh, based on statute of our county officer compensation, uh, I had a, I think you're aware of that, the compensation increase for our Colton, Culture Protection Rec Assistant Director, so that will be presented as well.
Okay, any questions?
Perfect, no, thank you.
That was easy.
I had one other piece of business.
Oh, okay.
Take like thirty minutes.
Okay.
Just kidding.
We do have a meeting in here in four or five, so.
Yeah, no, no problem, um, Lori Sutherland works in our accounting department, she does, she's been doing payroll for the past year, year and a half, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, and we'd like to request a one-time bonus for her, um, we have the budget for it in this year. She's been doing the payroll and you, I'm sure you've heard, payroll is, is kind of the best, the system is quite a challenge. And it's, we were just talking about it, and for her, it's Tuesday could be a great day, like last Tuesday was great for her. She finished payroll in record time, I think fastest ever.
Yeah.
It was done by two thirty, she's been here as late as midnight, um, and usual, almost always every Tuesday is here after hours. Um, and it's just, if it's not one problem, it's another, and it's mostly system-related and it's not something that she can research her way out of or anything like that, and she's just stepped up and Steph has to, but we don't care about Stephanie that much.
Excuse me?
John, I'll pay for that later.
Yeah.
Um.
Probably by more than one person, right?
Yeah. Uh, anyway, so she, she's really has stepped up and, and worked hard to make sure that payroll happens on time, so we want to request a two thousand dollar, uh, bonus for her that would come out of our budget, um, and if you don't wanna decide right now, I can leave the memo with you, the request app. But just wanted to request that for her as a recognition of her extra work.
Two grand?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, I'll leave this for you guys to sign.
Do you want it back running now?
Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Not that I don't trust you.
Not on the daughter's line.
Considerate.
And I think turnout, uh, for these elections is gonna get close to forty percent.
First for this election's pretty good, isn't it?
Pretty good, the highest we've had in the past twelve years is forty percent, so.
Cool.
We're in line.
On a municipal.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So what kind of hat should I, Ricky, wear tomorrow for violating the open meetings law?
Oh. Did I violate open meetings laws?
Probably shouldn't have talked about it in an open, yeah, no.
Oh yeah, we just. Okay.
Ricky, hey, we err on the side of transparency around here.
That's right.
Okay. Thanks, you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
I think Bill and Sean have put one out there now.
You, give me grief, anytime you want. Anytime.
Okay, Steph.
Okay.
Thanks. Wear gloves.
Thanks, guys.
Hang on.
Hey. Got it.
Uh-oh. Well, that's purvis, yes, that's good.
That's, that's.
So.
He's in. He's in.
Figured he would be.
Yeah.
Steph, give him a nod. Yeah, that's great. I think that's great.
I think it's very fun.
You're gonna, you're gonna be just like. Well, you won't be like Little Mook when he lost his two girls, bro.
Three fifteen dress.
Wish I could be. Oh, that one's at two forty-nine.
Uh.
Which one is?
Yeah.
He just had this look on his face like.
I don't think it's.
What did you just do to him?
Uh, it's a.
I was getting it every night.
Oh. Actually, he was getting a little frisky with one of the bowls, I think the bowl, you know, did particularly care.
Oh, huh.
I know. Back shoulder, talking about insane.
Yeah.
In a couple of weeks?
Okay.
Because.
Portland, you're back.
They have tickets to see one of the most famous.
So this is, that's so cool.
Luciano Pavarotti?
We actually got more standing, oh, more encores out of the Met than Pavarotti.
Really?
Wow.
Most ever.
Who is it?
Javier Camarena.
Oh.
Javier, huh?
Okay.
Portland, you've anticipated those kinds of musical.
I have not.
Back to the agenda, discussion regarding Weaver Housing Authority contract and lease agreement, Bill Ross, Sean Wilkinson, Cortland Erickson, Bill?
Well, Sean, you are.
Sure.
Sean?
Yeah, no, no problem.
Me first, yeah.
Uh, so Commissioners, we are, as you know, we are in process of building a space for the housing authority on the first floor. And we've been working with Andy Beatles quite a bit, and we do have a contract now, or the, the basis of a contract, uh, that we are looking to get into place.
for the the basis of a contract uh that we are looking to get into place. Uh, one of the agreements, is it on tomorrow's agenda?
No.
The Housing Authority has agreed to contribute fifty thousand dollars toward uh the cost of building their space. Yep, so there, there is an agreement that they will pay that and we will have the space done by a certain date in December. And we agreed to that. That, that should be a a pretty quick and simple process. So, any questions about that contract or that agreement between us?
Set the rate, they start market rate.
Yes, yeah, well, and that, so that contract is simply for building out the space. The next one is the lease agreement. And we, we have talked to Andy about that as well. So they have uh just over sixteen hundred square feet down there. We had talked about a dollar fifty per square foot being the market rate. They have agreed to that price. So Cortland is working on putting together a lease agreement right now. And uh that's what we would propose to you in the next few weeks. Before they start that lease at the beginning of the year, so. That's, that's what we're doing right now and it's going well. If you go down there right now, you'll see all the walls are framed and ceilings off and our guys are hard at work.
Great, alright, thank you.
So, okay.
You're okay with the rate? I guess that's what, that's what we were mostly.
Dollar fifty a square foot, it's six hundred square feet, so that's, that's okay, yeah.
So I have a couple of questions, if it's okay. We had some pretty lengthy detailed agreements with Woodbury Corp. For leasing space from them when they were part owner of the building. We're talking thirty pages or something of commercial lease language. And we've also used kind of a simpler form, I think it was a Post Brothers, or no, it was Staker Parsons. We leased some space to, I think we still are, out by the County Road Shop. And so the, the thought was not to be as lengthy and detailed as the Woodbury leases, but with the Housing Authority to use kind of a simpler form, borrowing potentially some provisions from that Woodbury lease. Plugging it in, you know, adding a little bit maybe if we need to deal with some of the issues related to leasing space in this building. But um I will have some questions and I guess Sean, you'd be and Bill, the ones to work with on that, right? Okay, so just go through you guys for, for questions. Is there anything in particular that you want me to know right now as I start drafting it, any crucial provisions or anything? The Housing Authority.
We don't, we don't need a twenty-page lease. My grandpa used to tell me, if you can't do it on two pages, you don't need it. So do it on two pages.
The, the only thing, they will be providing their own internet. But we will be providing all of the other utilities. So that's what we do for all of the other clients in our building.
Yeah, just, it's a gross lease and, yeah.
And it's a, I get the sense, while I know it's a party that we're familiar with, we, and there's an level of trust here, I think, and and we've gotta put stuff on paper, but.
No, it's gotta be in writing, but I, I don't think, yeah, a lot of the details in that Woodbury lease wouldn't even apply in this particular case, so.
Okay, thank you.
I got full faith in you, Cortland.
Anything else? Alright, Commissioners, item eight is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
One favor.